Mr. Prince, please proceed with Mr. Klein.
Before you do that, I have one quick request. The statements made prior to our recess with regard to Attorney Camp's email. I'd like that email marked as Board Exhibit B-52, and it's an email from Kristen Camp to Paul Prince, myself, and Mr. Kaplan dated December 10th, 2018. It shows 11:157 in my email. That's not here. It wasn't part of the record, but I'm requesting that it be part of the record because my recollection of the content of that email is not the same as Attorney Camp's, so the email can speak for itself. So I'm requesting that that email be added to the Board Exhibits as B-52.
We already have a B-52. The order that Mr. Prince handed-
It's a B-53.
And you're going to have to repeat again what email it is.
December 10th, 2018, sent by you at 1:57 PM. It's the email that you referred to in our colloquy with regard to the Board Exhibits and how they were to be treated.
I think I agree with your characterization of how the Board Exhibits would be treated, and I said that you can call your witnesses to the extent they're relevant to... They're not going to repeat what was stated in the letters.
Jean, what's the date of that email?
December 10th, 2018, Mark. And I just don't have a scanner or anything. I produced it, but I'm just saying that we talked about it. Let's make it part of that.
Sure. Fine. No problem. Mr. Prince, please proceed.
Real quick, Ms. Camp. In speaking with Supervisor Winters, he is able to say if this does... I'll let the Board decide in my absence if they want to continue the quorum, and then obviously we'll figure that out at 2:00, but I wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Please.
Mr. Klein, I've given you in the Board a copy of your September 27th review letter.
Yes.
And if you want to open November 2nd at the same time, that's Board Exhibit 22 in the big binder that's in front of you.
Mr. Prince, you want your September 27th, 2018 letter from Penoni marked as BVA 14. Is that correct?
Yes, please. Now, I would direct your attention, Mr. Klein, please, to number 15 and 16, which purport to address Sections 350-33 and 350-33C.
No, I was just looking to see what number the exhibit was.
22.
And we're referring to the September 27th letter, correct?
Yes. You can look at the November 2nd if you want. It's the same.
Correct. Same numbering system, yes.
So 15 and 16, am I correct, refer to radii and the tangents for reverse curves?
Yes.
And as near as I can tell, comparing... I compared your August 22nd, but doesn't matter. Your September 27th and your November 2nd review letters. The only change is that you've added that the applicant requested a waiver from the requirements. Is that true?
That appears to be correct.
So then-
I'm sorry. The difference between which letters?
The difference between the August 22nd letter-
August.
And November 2nd or September 27th. It doesn't matter. The change took place between August 22nd and September 27th.
But, 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 I'm sorry.
He doesn't have the August letter in front of him.
I know that. I know that. It's irrelevant to the question.
Okay. I apologize. Go ahead.
Don't bring it up.
I brought it up to identify that he made a change in his text. The only change is to add, as he already said, the applicant has requested a waiver from this requirement. Correct, Mr. Klein? That that was the change?
That... I don't have the August letter in front of me, but that appears to be the change.
Okay. Now, is it correct that with regard to these two sections, I'm talking about your 15 and 16, which address 350-33 and 350-33C, you took no position with regard to whether or not the property, as it stands today, has a physical hardship that would prevent compliance with those ordinance sections in the design of a plan?
Correct.
Are you aware, sitting here today, of any physical hardship on that piece of property as it stands today that would prevent compliance with these sections?
I did not comment on these waivers. They're regarding traffic and transportation-related items, and I was letting Mr. Heinrich handle that as part of his review.
Well, but you did address them, and you did say that he's requested a waiver, and I'm not asking you that. Let me ask you a preliminary question. Have you seen the property?
Yes.
You've gone out?
Yes.
You've looked at it?
Yes.
Okay. So is there anything you're aware of with that physical property as it stands today that would prevent the composition of a plan that would be in compliance with these two sections?
I can simply say I have not analyzed that.
Okay. But are you aware of any physical hardship that you saw there that, in your opinion, as an engineer looking at the property, would prevent designing a plan to comply with those two sections?
Objection. Asked and answered twice.
Sustained. Move on, please, Mr. Prince.
In looking at your review letters, the only other items I see that refer to traffic are 57, 59, 60, and 61. And I presume that that's because-
Could you repeat those numbers?
For a statement that those will be reviewed by others. Is that right?
Yeah. Could you repeat those numbers?
Pardon me. 57, 59, 60, and 61.
I don't know that I necessarily agree with that statement you had made. They're kind of general comments that are, for lack of a better word, they're kind of in everybody's jurisdiction a little bit.
Okay. So you don't think that those should be reserved for Mr. Heinrich or somebody else?
Not necessarily. Those are a little bit more general than specific, I'd say.
So you've addressed, and use your November 2nd review letter for one of a different one. You've addressed the review by effectively creating sections, zoning, subdivision, stormwater, general comments. Is that right? You've sectioned off your review letter.
Generally do that just to try to keep things organized and clear for everybody.
Okay.
Make an attempt to do so.
And the first section is your zoning section. Is that right?
Yes.
And using your November 2nd letter, which I have in front of me, Board Exhibit 22, you have your November 2nd letter in front of you?
I do.
Your first section, zoning, references Section 399, the zoning statute ordinance, excuse me. Is that correct? That's the first section?
Correct.
Would you point out to me where you've addressed compliance with 399.47?
I don't know what that section is in refer to, but I do not see a notation towards that in the zoning section here.
You'll agree with me. It doesn't appear anywhere in your report.
Within the zoning section I have in front of me, I don't see it, no.
The ordinance book, I think, is still in front of you?
That's the SADO in front of him. He doesn't have-
Is...
399.47. I'll give him my copy of my zoning ordinance.
I have the zoning ordinance now? What was the que... Can you repeat the question, or?
Sure. Did somebody tell you not to address that?
To not address-
That section?
Did somebody... Nobody directed me to do anything regarding my review. I reviewed it per the code to my best ability.
So why didn't you address that section?
Um, let's see here.
I'm going to object. He's already answered this question.
If he did, I didn't hear it.
Yeah. He said he addressed the ordinance to the best of his ability, and he addressed the ordinance sections that he thought were relevant.
Yeah, I agree that doesn't answer the question. I think the question is-
Asking him why he didn't address the section.
Right, and he can answer it. Please.
Yeah. Again, our review is a comprehensive review of the ordinances, and the comments in our letter were the comments that we had uncovered to the best of our ability.
So it's something you missed?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The section I just asked you about?
Well, there's many sections to 399.47. Is there a specific pair for... Is there a specific clause that you believe is relevant to this plan?
Have your book, please. Do you have the 399.47 in front of you?
399.47, yes. It goes letters A through P.
Now, when you make a determination of what is relevant to review, generally speaking, how do you make that determination?
I review plans on a regular basis for multiple communities over the past 18 years, and I use my best judgment.
Do you... I appreciate that. I guess I'm trying to ask you how the structure or the modality you use in doing that. Do you go through the ordinance section by section to see what might or might not apply? Do you rely on a list that's given you by the developer? I mean, how do you decide what you're going to look at and review when you see a plan?
I generally take a look at the zoning and determine which applicable sections of the zoning and review those sections. I then go to the subdivision land development, do the same thing, then go to the stormwater section, do the same thing. Again, use my best judgment as to what is applicable to the project.
Did you see 399-47K?
K. Yes, that appears to be in regards to sewage facilities and water supply.
And you see the reference to compliance with the requirements of 350.47 and 350.48?
Yes.
And you didn't feel that that made that section relevant to comment on in your review, that zoning section?
Right. I am not the township sewer engineer. Mr. Boldaz testified earlier. He is the sewer engineer, and I leave the sewer items to him, just as I explained earlier with Mr. Heinrich regarding the traffic items.
So it's your testimony that if we go through your review, we're not going to see any sewer items?
That's not what I said. I generally leave the sewer items to Mr. Boldaz, as he is the sewer consultant for the township.
Well, generally means that not always. So how do you decide which sewer issues in reviewing the development you're going to comment on and which you aren't?
If there's something that relates to something else I'm reviewing on that's connected, I may comment on something. For example, a conflict with a storm sewer line or a conflict with a road, I would perhaps comment on that. But at the end of my letter, I indicate that there are separate reviews by separate consultants that will address those requirements.
Were you aware of the fact that there was an effluent storage issue here that had to be resolved?
No.
Okay. Your item number five is addressing compact spaces. Correct?
Correct.
And your August 22nd letter, which I believe you have in front of you?
I do not. You provided me the September letter and the Nov-
But didn't you bring all of your letters to the witness stand there with you?
Not my August letter, no. I don't have it with me the second. Is that something I should locate, or?
Well, I'll ask you. I looked at your letter, and your letter indicated that the ordinance wasn't properly satisfied with this item, and I believe the text of that objection appears in your November 2nd letter. Starting with the applicant is utilizing?
Which letter are you reading from? There's nothing in paragraph 5 that the applicant is utilizing. Are you revering... Are you reading an August letter that he doesn't have?
Oh, ma'am. I asked him about the... I'm reading from his November 2nd letter.
Okay.
I asked him if that doesn't, in fact, include the original comment that he made. He told me that it did previously, and I'm just asking. Where it says the applicant is utilizing compact car spaces per 399-105C, et cetera, et cetera. Do you have that there in your letter?
Yes.
Does that paragraph indicate that they are in compliance with the ordinance?
If we're referring to my November letter, my comment was that it is subject to Board approval per the ordinance.
Ah. So subject to Board approval, doesn't that imply that as it stands, without the Board approval, it is not in compliance with the ordinance section?
I believe that's in your... It seems to be your interpretation of it.
I'm asking you.
I don't know that I would agree with that interpretation.
Well, what happens if the Board doesn't approve?
They would have to make revisions to address that situation.
And let the record show, that's exactly what has happened here in this section. The Planning Commission made a recommendation-
Objection to Mr. Kaplan testifying and interrupting.
I'm going to get it on the record.
It's not an objection. It's not an objection.
The Planning Commission-
Mr. Kaplan, you can cross-examine on it. Mr. Prince, please proceed.
Thank you.
There's a false premise being put out here again.
In order to comply, didn't you recommend that the compact car spaces be grouped together along the perimeter?
Yeah, I believe we stated perhaps along the perimeter of the site. We did suggest that.
And even though you say resolve subject to Board approval, nevertheless, you maintained that those spaces should be grouped, correct?
I said perhaps.
Perhaps. Do you know of any physical handicap in the design of this property arising out of the physical layout of this existing property that prevents designing the parking in compliance with that section?
I'm going to object. The documents that have been introduced show that at the Planning Commission's suggestion, we have made the change to get rid of the diamonds, and therefore, we have no...
That's not-
We have no scattered parking spaces.
But that's... Yeah, that's not an appropriate objection. You may answer the question.
I... Can you repeat the question, Mr. Prince? I apologize.
I have the same short-term memory problem.
I don't think...
No, I think the plan could be revised to show more strict compliance with that section.
The section does not authorize the Board to waive the zoning section, does it?
The section says unless otherwise approved by the Board of Supervisors.
You had the section in front of you, the full section?
I do.
Read the full section, please.
Um...
Out loud.
I'm sorry. Let me sure... I'm sorry. I might have cited the wrong one there.
Why do we need him to read it? It's part of the record. The entire zoning ordinance is part of the record. We have it. We know what it says. It says unless otherwise approved by the Board of Supervisors, which means the Board of Supervisors can approve something different. That's what it says.
With due respect, Madam Solicitor, you're trying to parse it. It doesn't say that.
I'm not parsing anything. The ordinance says what it says.
That's right. It does. And the authorization the section gives is that the Board is allowed up to 30% of the required spaces can be dedicated to compact car spaces. Nowhere does it say that the Board has the authority to waive the requirement. It says they can designate the number of compact car spaces. That's all it says.
Mr. Prince, we have in the record what it says. We don't need any testimony on it, and we don't need your interpretation of it, and we don't need arguing on it. Move on.
Do you agree, Mr. Klein, that your determination, subject to Board approval, inferring that they can eliminate compact car spaces or eliminate the requirement of where they must appear, is not correct in accordance with the terms of the actual ordinance?
No. I don't know that I agree with that.
Okay. Your first and sixth issue under zoning address porous surface, is that right?
Yes.
Or impervious surface?
No. Pervious. Not impervious.
Okay. And you're relying on the definition found in 300-17? Is that right?
I don't see where I cited that, no.
Well... Isn't that what is defined in the township ordinance?
I don't have the definition section of the ordinance in front of me, so I can't speak to that.
Okay.
Actually, in the front of the SADO-
In the front of SADO?
-that you have there, Section 300. Paragraph 1, you refer to it as well in your November 2nd letter.
Oh, that's... Thank you.
...what Mr. Prince was referring to.
I got you. So 317 is the definitions. A pervious surface or pervious area is defined in 317?
Mr. Klein, looking at your November 2nd report, item 1 under zoning, you reference that the limits be minimized to the extent feasible. Have you received any written advice or information indicating any further reduction in... or minimization in the low-traffic areas of the porous surface?
I believe between the August and November submissions, there was a reduction in the pervious surface area on the plans, if I recall correctly.
No, I'm saying subsequent to November, your comment in your-
We have not reviewed-
...November 2nd letter says, "Further, we recommend the limits of the porous payments be minimized, blah, blah, blah." Did you receive anything subject to November 2nd showing-
I think... If I may. I think you're misreading that comment slightly. That is a repetition of our previous comment that goes back to previous reviews.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes. You're right.
Okay. So again, between, I believe, and don't quote me on which plan, but between the August and November reviews, one of those plans reduced the amount of pervious square footage.
Okay. Have you received any documentation from the applicant, including the condition and characteristics of the porous material that they proposed to use?
I don't recall if there is a... If there would be anything, it would be a detail on the plan. Off the top of my head, I believe there is a detail. Beyond that, we have not received anything additional, and I think I comment regarding operations and maintenance and considerations that need to be made prior to approvals.
Okay. Moving on to subdivision, would you please point out to me in the review letter where you've addressed compliance with 350-47? Or was that another one of those sewer issues that you decided not to review?
Well, if you're bringing it up, I'm going to presume it's not addressed in here, but if you could give me a moment, I can double-check. What section was that again?
Well, don't assume. I make mistakes too.
Yeah. What was the section again?
350-47.
Again, that was sewage treatment disposal, which I left to Mr. Boldaz.
Okay. Nobody told you to do that? You elected to do that on your own?
Yeah. I would say that's something I've done since I've been working here in East Brandywine. Again, there's multiple consultants involved, and to the best ability, we kind of try to stay in our lane, and there's some crossover, but we try to stay in our lane, and I defer to him.
Now, your review is November 2nd.
Correct.
Did you ask for or receive from the township hydroterra's reviews?
I believe I've received them, yes.
And if you look at the one that's referenced in the book, let's... Let me point it out to you so that we're not left with any assumptions.
It's B-24. It's dated August 31st, 2018.
Sorry, what was the date?
B-24, dated August 31st, 2018.
Okay. Did you have an opportunity to review that?
I can't say I've reviewed that in detail, no.
And that is, if you look at the book, the only one that's in there, and it appears it was sent to the municipal authority and to the solicitor for the Planning Commission and otherwise to Carlino's representatives.
He's also the authority solicitor, which is why he received a copy of it.
That's fine.
Okay. I'm just making that point clear.
But it doesn't say that you got a copy. Did the township supply you with that?
I'm going to presume the township at some point provided me a copy. At some point, either I became aware it was available and asked for it. Again, I try to get copies of all correspondence just to have a complete record of the project.
Would you please take a look at it? It's Exhibit 24 in the book. You have that there?
Yes.
This is the letter I had questioned Mr. Boldaz about. You were present. It's addressed to Jan Bednarczyk from the Sewer Authority, Municipal Authority, correct?
Yes.
Do you see any comment in there addressing the township zoning or subdivision ordinances?
Not in this letter, no.
So if nobody from the Sewer Authority addressed it in August, and we have since the August 31st dated the Sewer Authority's letter, I think we have three or four reviews from you, but you didn't address these issues either. So nobody's addressed these issues for the township.
Again, I... You would have to speak to Mr. Boldaz in Municipal Authority.
But you didn't address it.
We did not do a comprehensive review of the sanitary sewer for this project, no.
Okay. I want to now ask you some questions about your December 7th review letter, which is...
Yes, it's B-32.
32? Thank you. So if you'd be kind enough to turn to B-32. And this is a review of LTL's report, right?
LTL's November 1st, 2018 report.
Would you look at the end of the letter to the CC? You didn't send me a copy, did you?
It does not appear you were copied on here, no.
And I had been present and talked to you at the November Planning Commission meeting.
Objection. It has to relevance.
I've been very patient with Mr. Kaplan's interruption of my questions, but I believe under the rules, let alone decency, I'm entitled to ask the question, to finish the question before he objects, because otherwise, how can he object if I haven't finished the question?
You finished the question.
Thank you.
You were just repeating me more. What's the difference whether he got the copy or not?
Can you just ask the question?
I did. May he answer it?
If the question is, was Mr. Prince copied on my letter directly? No.
I talked with you at the November Planning Commission meeting, did I not, with regard to receiving from you copies of your reports? And at that point, did you tell me or indicate in any way that you were going to review LTL's reports in writing?
I don't... I don't recall our conversation, Mr. Prince. I apologize.
Did you send a copy of your review of LTL's report to LTL?
I don't have them copied on here. I sent the review via email. It's possibly I did copy them. I don't recall without having that email in front of me.
But you clearly didn't copy them on this letter, did you?
Objection.
They're not listed on here. Sorry.
Objection. What's... He's badgering this witness over a copy of a document. He's not addressing the substance. You please direct him to get back to the substance. This is not relevant, and it's wasting our collective time.
The objection took longer than the question.
Okay. Mr. Prince, the objection is sustained. I agree it's not relevant. The letter speaks for itself, Wesley. You got a copy. Move on.
May I comment before you decide?
No.
I think justice allows that you decide impartially on the basis of both presentations, not only one. The relevance is one- The relevance is, once again, going to the overall question of whether my client has been treated fairly in this matter. You have a review of...
Mr. Prince, I heard your... I've heard your response. The objection is sustained. Your client has been treated beyond fair. Mr. Klein from Pinoni works for the Board Supervisors in the township. He does not work for LTL, and he does not work for BVA. So, the correspondence that he prepared was at the request of the staff and the board to be able to know whether the issues raised by LTL's letter had merit and required the board to take certain action on the plan. So, he works for the township. That's why the letter was sent to the township relating to a plan of the applicant, which is why the applicant received it. And I believe you received copies. I believe Mr. SD sent you copies of these, and if not, I did, in advance of this... In advance of the December 12th hearing. You received these. I know you did.
No.
Well, I will produce the emails where I sent them to you.
Appreciate it. I'd appreciate it. And I see it went not only to the developer, but it also went to the developer's engineer, the developer's principal, and the developer's counsel.
Because they are the applicant. Move on, please. And I sent them to you, and I will mark... I will make sure I reserve that as an exhibit.
Now, looking at your review letter of December 7th, you do not... And this is not a criticism, Mr. Klein, so don't get defensive. You don't recite what LTL's objection is to which you're answering, correct, in your letter?
Correct.
So, in order to know what it is that you're responding to, theoretically, you need to compare that letter to this letter. Is that right?
That's correct.
You have a copy of LTL's November 1st report in front of you that you can compare it to?
Be appropriate for you to direct him to it?
Well, when I find it, I will...
What exhibit is?
This is a big book.
And this is your case?
B-28.
Okay.
I just lost his. Madam Solicitor, what's the number for the December 7th? What is it?
E-32.
If you look at your item number one on the porous surface, you point out that Carlino is going to be required to provide details of the maintenance and to perform routine maintenance so they remain porous. And you reference an agreement to that effect. Have you seen the agreement?
No.
Have you seen any draft of proposed maintenance for those areas?
No, I don't believe so.
So, would it be fair to say, sitting here today, you really have no idea whether or not the areas will remain porous because you have no idea what they intend to do to keep them that way?
I... I don't know that I would agree with that, no. They've clearly stated that they would enter into an operations-maintenance agreement. It's a very standard document in the engineering industry for these types of sites, and they've agreed to enter into some type of agreement. I would acknowledge, I don't know the specifics of said agreement, but they've obviously entered... Will enter into a maintenance agreement.
Have you prepared one for them?
For them, no.
Have you seen one?
I already said no.
So, you're making an assumption, aren't you? About what it will provide or include?
I haven't made any discussion about what's going to include or not. It's going to be an operation and maintenance. They've acknowledged they'll provide something to address operations and maintenance of the porous surface. Standard procedure for any land development plan.
So... What will happen if they don't maintain it in accordance with what they... You believe will be included in the standard maintenance agreement that you haven't seen yet? What will happen if they don't do that?
Objection, not relevant. It's an enforcement issue. That's not an issue for whether or not the plan is in compliance.
The issue of the porosity of the surface has to do with the water storage and water absorption. If it is not maintained properly, there will be a problem with the stormwater and the runoff, and I'm...
Understood, Mr. Prince, but... But Mr. Klein will be involved in the preparation and review of that agreement, and will have to meet whatever his professional opinion is for the material to remain porous. So, that is an appropriate condition for a board to put on a plan approval. So, the fact that the agreement, just like financial security agreements, land development agreements, stormwater operation and management agreements that are referenced in the stormwater ordinance, those agreements have not been reviewed and approved. Those are typical conditions of plan approval. There's nothing illegal about that. Well, my point is that the objection is sustained. Please move on.
I'm asking him what will happen if it is not maintained? That's a practical problem.
The agreement will speak to that. So, the agreement will speak to that. It's a legal agreement that will be prepared with input from Mr. Klein.
The agreement... I don't mean to argue with you. I'm not asking what the agreement will provide...
I object. My objection's been sustained, and you're getting the filibuster.
There he goes again.
No judge would put up with this.
Mr. Prince, the objection was sustained. Please move on. From now forward, if you make a statement and you make an objection, you'd like a response, once there's a ruling, please move on.
And you have no comment, of course, about Mr. Kaplan's interruption?
That's going to go forward for both parties. Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Turning again to your December 7th review letter, it appears that a number of the issues that LTL raised were not included in your report. For instance, and you have LTL's number board Exhibit 28 in front of you, and your Exhibit 32, your December 7th letter in front of you. LTL has comments 12, 14, 30, 35, and 41, and I can't find that you addressed any of those issues in your letter. Would you please tell me why not?
The LTL letter covered multiple items here at the township, and as I explained several times, you know, there's a traffic engineer, a sewer consultant, township solicitor, there's some legal aspects. So, this letter was divided, and the relevant items that were within our purview, we addressed via the December 7th letter.
Well, let's just...
On which one? The LTL? I have Page 8, I don't have Page 10. None of it, I don't have 8 either. Or 10.
Mr. Prince, in our file, we don't have... You had, just for instance, you had said 12. We don't have Page 10 or 8 in our LVL.
These were done by Chris.
Or LTL, I'm sorry.
No, you don't. I don't have 10 either.
I was just saying, I couldn't refer to that statement because I...
This is the book the township prepared, not me.
I just... So, we couldn't respond to it, so I'm just letting you know.
Because it was double-sided. Here it is.
We're missing two pages from the LTL review letter because...
We're missing only two?
Well, no, we're missing Page 2.
It's because it was double-sided. It was not copied appropriately. Mr. Scribner, how is that?
Norm, do you have a copy of it?
Yes.
I think we have it, please. Thank you. Well, Mr. Klein, I have a copy, so I can tell you what 12 is, and then you can see it's not in your letter. 12 in LTL's report referred to Section 350-24B on requiring information outlined within Section 350-24B to be shown within the property and within 300 feet of any part of the property. I didn't see a reference to that. You went through and used his numbers, and if you look at the second page of your report, the number is clearly... Is clearly missing. It's not there.
Can you repeat? Excuse me. Could you repeat the number of LTL's letter you referenced, Mr. Prince? I'm at number 12 or Page 12?
Item number 12.
Item 12, thank you. On Page 10. Thank you, guys. Sorry about that, I was mixing up pages and...
I mean, that's not a section that has anything to do with sewage or...
No, it's not. It does not have to do with sewage. Give me one second, if you may. Just maybe double-check here.
Hold on.
Yeah, I got it. I'm sorry, I wrote my own copy, but I was not letting them know that. Thank you, bud. I believe we did not include that because they requested a waiver from that section, Mr. Prince. I believe in our correspondence, any one that was clearly a waiver, we may not have addressed specifically, if I recall correctly.
So, you think that's what the distinction was?
In this specific one, yes. Regarding... Yes, specifically regarding number 12.
I mean, I'm just asking because I'm curious why some were just omitted, like number 14 had to do with certification. There's no waiver requested of that, and you didn't include that. Number 30...
Just ask a question?
No, I haven't finished it.
Yeah, 4...
Yeah, number 30 has to do with the grade of a driveway. There is a request for a waiver there. 35 was the section on the sewer section, which I believe you ignored that because it was sewer.
Yeah, as I stated earlier, when we had received LTL's letter, we divided it up per the various consultants, and we each addressed the issues that pertain to them. That included items that were under the solicitor's purview, Mr. Heinrich, as well as, I believe, Joe Boldaz as well, possibly. So, yes, my letter of December 7th does not address every single comment of LTL's November 1st letter intentionally.
Okay. You're aware of the fact that there was a review done by Mr. Heinrich of this letter, just as you did a review of LTL's? But there's no review submitted by the Sewer Authority?
Okay.
So, there was no discussion among the engineers as to do what?
No, I was directed by Ms. Camp which specific comments I should address. I can't speak to any other discussions with anybody else.
Would you look at your Note 28? And that requests an initial note to be added to the plan. Has it in fact been added?
No, I don't believe we've seen revised plans since we issued this letter.
Your Note 33 says, "However, it may be prudent to reconsider landscaping options for the area adjacent to the the retention stormwater basin number 2 to minimize future maintenance issues." Does that mean you agree with LTL's comment that the proposed strip of the border of the connector road would be impossible to maintain in its present configuration?
No, I don't state that, no.
So, you don't think that, but you think the landscaping option for that area needs to be revised?
It could be reviewed, and there could be improvements made to that, yes.
And has that been done on the plans that are before you?
I don't... Again, I don't believe we've seen revised plans since we issued this letter.
Look at your number 40. You conclude 40 by saying, "We have no technical objection to the granting of this modification." Is that what it says?
Yes.
The question really is, does the property have a physical hardship that necessitates this modification?
That's a question for the elected officials. I'm just reviewing the plans. I don't make a decision on granting any sort of modification.
I didn't ask you that, Mr. Klein, please. I'm asking you a very simple question. If you don't know how to answer it, just say so. I'm asking you, do you know of anything with regard to the property physically as the property stands that would prevent the design of a plan in compliance with this section?
Objection, ask and answer.
Hasn't been answered.
It was answered. It was not answered.
The objection is overruled. I don't think he's answered it, but please do not badger the witness with a very rude tone of voice. He's here trying to answer your questions to the best of his ability.
All I'm trying to do, ma'am, is get an answer.
I think in this specific regard, you know, hardship is a very difficult thing. It's a hard term to use. In this case, I think any modification, any waiver, is going to then impact something else. So, it's an iterative effect. So, by trying to meet this and trying to conform to this, it's going to... Something else is going to get out of whack. Something else is going to need to be adjusted. So, it's hard to say. It's... There's... It's a tight design to get that road network through this site, and it's difficult to do this with the utilities and all the other requirements for sidewalk, guide rails, curbing, et cetera, that need to be met there. So, again, I leave the decisions up to the elected officials, but from a design standpoint, I think this is a reasonable design in this regard.
It's not the question I asked you, Mr. Klein. Let me try it this way.
Mr. Prince, just because he doesn't answer it the way you want, he's allowed to answer the question to the best of his ability, which he did.
Fine, let me ask you this.
You can't get him to answer it the way you want. You can't keep asking the same question.
Taking this property as...
He did not answer the question. I want to note my objection to your comment, Ms. Camp. Mr. Klein was not responsive to the question asked.
Let me ask it this way.
There's one... There's supposed to be one judge in this room, and you're supposed to be it. And this is just as disrespectful as anything I've ever seen. Please order him on the record to stop it, because the judge is ultimately going to have to look at this. And this is... This is... This is just disgraceful.
Mr. Prince, please move on with another question.
Well, I'm trying to, thank you. Mr. Klein, you're an engineer. If you looked at that property today as it stands, do you see anything there physically that would prevent you from designing a plan for that property that would comply with this section?
Objection. He's asked and answered. The question is with regard to this plan, not a blank piece of ground. He's given a very logical answer. They don't like it, so they keep doing it. Please direct him to move on or throw him out of here.
I'd actually like to... I'd like to hear the answer, though.
The municipality's planning code has very precise requirements legally for hardship. I have the right to ask your professional witness, what is the physical hardship on this property that prevents it, whether he wants to answer it or not?
But, Mr. Prince, I would agree with Mr. Kaplan that you can't ask him to provide an answer with respect to a blank piece of vacant ground. The waiver... Mr. Prince...
The statute says that.
Mr. Prince, I am speaking with respect... A waiver is asked in reference to a plan. So, with respect to the design of the plan, the question can be, with the design of the plan, is there a physical characteristic that would necessitate the waiver? But you can't say, "On a blank piece of ground, that's vacant ground." That's not the relevant question to ask.
I beg your pardon, ma'am.
It's not the relevant legal standard.
The last case decision on the matter says it is.
No, it doesn't.
It says, "You look at it..."
Mr. Prince, we're not having any further discussion. If you want to ask that question, he can answer it. But it's not with respect to a... But it's not with respect to a vacant tract of ground.
Do you believe, Mr. Klein, sitting here today, that it is not possible to design this property and the connector road and comply with the township ordinances?
Objection.
Same question.
Same question over and over again.
It is not the same question.
It is the same question. I've made an objection. Please rule on it.
The objection is sustained. Please move on.
Mr. Klein, in your opinion, based on your last answer, and if you need me to have it read back to you, I will, please tell me what prevents you, given that answer, from contemplating a design for this development that meets the township ordinance?
Objection.
Would you read back, read back his lengthy answer to him, so he understands why I'm asking him?
Objection, to ask and answer.
There hasn't been...
He gave a full answer as to why he has no, no objection to the waiver that's been requested. He's not going to get the answer that he wants.
Why, did you arrange it with him already?
No, no.
Gentlemen, please stop. The objection is sustained. Please move on.
I do have one question. What is it, what do you go by, then? Do you go by, if it's not, if it's not gone by what the current use is, what would...
You go by what's on the plan. Can they design the plan with the proposed improvements?
But what happens if that, what happens if that happened, you walk away, and then you have another person who purchased it like this?
The waivers that are requested are specific to this particular plan. So the question that he asked was, looking at just a vacant tract of ground, can you comply? Well, you have to look at the entire design of the plan and all the ordinance sections they have to meet. Then the question is, is it relevant to, or is it appropriate to grant a waiver? You can't just say, "Okay, you have a blank piece of land, can you put the street trees outside of the right-of-way?" Well, of course, if that's the only thing you're doing. I think that's the point that Mr. Klein was trying to get at, looking at the entire development and all the requirements of all the ordinances, he provided his response.
But how do you determine like a reuse or a roll-in?
I don't want, what you, I don't, I want the same thing you want, Ms. Camp, but what you just stated is not a correct statement of the law.
Well, then a judge will rope, then a judge will tell us.
Let me finish, too. I am asking you to please consider the case of Lake McLeod Homeowners Association versus Pine Township Board of Supervisors. It is an unreported Commonwealth Court decision. It can be found at 1247 Commonwealth Court Docket, 2017. It was a memorandum decision by Judge Simpson, issued in March 12th of 2018 of this year, and it expressly states that in the consideration of waivers and evaluating them, when you are dealing with a blank piece of property, it is relevant consideration to determine whether or not there is a hardship. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I'm trying to prevent you from making a mistake here before we complete the testimony. Please, look at that case. If you choose to disagree after you look at it, perfectly okay, but what you stated, I'm trying to be as, as, as simple but as straightforward as I possibly can be, respectfully, you did not accurately state the law on waivers that the board has to find. Please reconsider that before you sustain objection.
Okay, I'd like to respond.
That aside, Ms. Camp.
I know, I'd like to respond. I, I've read that case, I've read that case three times. That case talked about a specific waiver that was granted for virtually no reason whatsoever, and the court said, "You can't do it that way," and it cited the general requirement. But if you look at all of the other cases where, where waivers and modifications have been considered, they, they do exactly what you described, that you have to take into consideration the entire overall development, the, the effect that one aspect of a, of a plan has on another, and you'll have to make a reasonableness determination based on all of the facts and circumstances. Why can't we go on? We've made the oral argument. This is not, this is not about oral argument. This is about getting Nate's testimony done.
Well, I'd also point out, and, and I will look at the case, but Nate doesn't grant the waiver, so it is up to the Board of Supervisors as to whether or not the waiver is appropriate. So we will take that case under consideration, and we will guide the board accordingly.
Ms. Camp, you know that the reason I was questioning is because he's an engineer, and the law places a high regard on the advice of engineers to... I would suggest to you that you read the transcript. How you posited it, because the problem that I had with the way you posited it was that effectively what you were saying in answer to his question was that you look at a plan that you receive, such as this plan, and you look at the waivers that are requested, and you have to decide that on the basis of whether this particular plan needs those waivers. If that were the case, if that were the only criteria...
I don't think that's an accurate characterization of what I said, but...
That's why I asked you to read the transcript. If that were the case, waivers would have to be granted in every single plan, and there would be no ability of attachment to this one. That's not the law.
Understood. Please move on.
I'm gonna move on.
And I probably will not have a transcript by next Tuesday, so...
Mr. Klein, would you look at number 42, please? Very carefully note that some of the design elements will result in a reduction of runoff on the BVA's property. Certainly, that's appreciated, but the question that was at the heart of LTL's objection number 42, and I have it in front of me, and I'm happy to show it to you, that really wasn't it, was it? Let me put it this way. Doesn't the plan propose a change in drainage, the discharge, drainage discharge to the downgradient properties, in this case, BVA?
Is it changing?
A change.
Sure.
Okay. Isn't LTL correct in its statement that 345-301G requires notification and perhaps permission from the downgradient properties whenever there is a drainage discharge alteration?
I believe that's what the code language says, yes.
So then, isn't LTL right in saying that there was notice required, and no evidence has been supplied to you that the notice was submitted?
Regarding a notice? Are you not aware of the project?
That's not what it says. You know, Mr. Klein, do you have the section in front of you, 345-301G?
I do not. I have the zoning and subdivision codes.
Let me show it to you.
I, I would just like to understand if what Mr. Prince is saying is that if we reduce the amount of runoff that's coming off our property onto his property...
Objection to Mr. Kaplan now interjecting statements and comments. If you have an objection, mark it, make it. Otherwise, this is what takes so long.
And, and you interrupting me doesn't help. There have been plenty of times when Paul has asked to get clarification. It's all I'm doing. I just want to make sure that what Paul is saying is that if we reduce the amount of runoff coming off of our property, we have to get the permission of the next-door property owner. If that's what he's saying, in some 40 years of doing this, I've never heard that before.
I don't know what he's asking. He's asking him to look at 345-301. Please proceed, Mr. Prince.
I've just asked you about a township ordinance. There it is down there. I highlighted in yellow. Would you read the portions highlighted in yellow to yourself?
This is from the ordinance?
Yes, word for word. You want to take it out of the book? Here, wait a minute.
What section?
Which is, which is the book?
I don't have either. I don't have the stormwater. This is zoning and subdivision land development. I, I just didn't know what that piece of paper was, Mr. Prince.
Right here. Which section?
345-301G. Well, I'm gonna read it to you, word for word. Sub 1, "For regulated activities within one acre or more of proposed earth disturbance." So let's, let's go to that first. Is this one acre or more of proposed earth disturbance?
Yes.
"Existing drainage peak rate discharges up to and including the 100-year storm onto or through adjacent properties or downgradient properties, including diffuse drainage discharge, shall not be altered in any manner without written permission from, and where applicable as determined by the township and easement and agreement with the affected landowners." Now, that's what it says. "Such discharge shall be subject to any applicable discharge criteria specified in this chapter." And then, sub 2 says, "For regulated activities with one acre or less," which doesn't matter here, because you already said it's more than one acre. Now, it clearly says, "Shall not be altered in any manner without written permission from." Now, absent you receiving any notification that that has occurred, hasn't that section been violated, and shouldn't they have requested a waiver?
You're speaking directly to the, the term there, which is altered.
Yes. I mean, that's what it says. That's the township board, and that's not mine.
Correct.
So shouldn't they have submitted that?
You know, that seems to be your interpretation. I've never had that interpretation in my 18 years, that a downstream property owner, where stormwater is being reduced and improved upstream, is notified or provided permission. But I won't disagree that the terminology in the code says altered.
I mean, and it says, "Altered in any manner without written permission." I mean, there's no issue about what it says, is there?
I'm not ar...
Objection, asked and answered.
Sustained. Please move on.
Has a waiver been requested?
From this section, I do not believe so.
So they're in violation of the subdivision section and haven't requested a waiver, correct?
Objection. Asked and answered. Asked and answered, and you're, and now you're asking for a legal conclusion. He gave you the answer. He said the word is altered.
Your item 49, you agreed with LTL that a waiver was requested, that was required, and subsequently, on November 16th, Mr. Kaplan did request a waiver. Did anybody discuss with you why it wasn't originally requested, but subsequently was requested on November 16th?
Let me, let me review the section real quick, Mr. Prince.
Sure.
And your question is, why was a waiver not originally requested for this?
No, I, I was curious if anybody explained to you why, on November the 16th, after LTL's report was issued, the waiver was requested, when Mr. Kaplan's prior review of LTL did not request a waiver?
No.
In fact, said it wasn't necessary.
I'm not aware of any discussion, no.
Okay. Your item number 51, you again say you have no technical objection to the granting of this modification. Do you believe that there is no way that plan can be designed without the need for that modification or waiver?
Objection, for the same reason that we've gone through ad nauseam before.
I mean, I would...
I think it's just overruled. I think he can answer whether he believes that a waiver is appropriate from that section.
That's not the question.
Okay, well, he can answer the question, then. Read back the question.
Oh, okay, go ahead. I may be wrong.
Your item number 51, you again say you have no technical objection to the granting of this modification. Do you believe that there is no way that plan can be designed without the need for that modification or waiver?
To be honest, I, I would have to take a closer look at the plan and detailed analysis, see if there was any other alternatives for this. Off the top of my head, I couldn't answer that question.
Number 52, similarly. What is the, the physical hardship that exists that requires you to say that you don't have any technical objection to that? I mean, you note that there have been inlets that have been added, correct?
Correct.
You don't, you don't explain whether or not that eliminates the problem altogether that LTL was pointing out, does it?
I don't believe it did, no.
In fact, there remain areas where the spread will actually overflow the, the road and sidewalk.
I don't know that that's accurate.
Well, that's what LTL asserted, didn't they?
I believe on the, maybe one of the previous plan submissions. I don't know if I would phrase it in that manner.
Give me a second. Let me get the comment, because... This lawyer agrees with you, engineers, that we should be specific. The last review, which was November 1st, which you have, LTL said, I'll eliminate the things that they say, well, a lot of them, specifically, additional inlets have been added, however, there are still inlets where the pavement spread exceeds four feet in width. What does that mean, if the pavement spread exceeds four feet in width? Would you explain that to the board?
Sure, sure. In, in certain storm events, where the runoff is such that it extends from the curb into the road approximately four feet. We tried, go ahead.
And he's saying there are places, even with the added inlets, where that spread will be greater than four feet onto the road and sidewalk, correct?
I believe that's what he's stating, yes. What I don't...
You didn't disagree with him, did you?
No.
So if that's the case, and even with the additional, they're still not in compliance, why would you be in favor of a waiver, allowing them to do that and to have these great spreads?
Well, great spreads is your term. From a design standpoint, you know, there are alternatives that are acceptable in the energy, engineering industry. I don't think this is unreasonable, what they're proposing.
And the problem with great spreads, as I understand it, is of course, that if it's a great spread of water and it freezes, you then have a great spread of ice, is that right?
Not necessarily, no.
Not necessarily, but it is possible, isn't it?
Do, do runoff is...
Speculation.
Sustained.
Never mind. Would you look at number 53? That's one dear to my heart. We're talking about flushing velocities.
Which number are you on?
53. Right? Isn't that about flushing velocities?
Correct.
And I understand your objection. I understand LTL's note. I just want to ask you very simply, if the township owns the road, strike that, doesn't the plan propose that ultimately the road is to be dedicated to the township, once the township files an additional condemnation action against them?
I don't know that part of it, but I believe it's to be a dedicated road.
So that road is going to become, is proposed to come at some point township property, correct?
Yes.
Who then owns the pipes in the road?
The township. Typically, the township, unless there's some sort of other agreement.
And typically, who has to maintain it?
The township.
And actually, the township couldn't have somebody else maintain them unless they contracted for it or gave them an easement, correct?
There's some sort of agreement, which happens.
If the township's responsible for this, then isn't the issue, for those pipes in the road, the flushing rate, an important issue?
Well, you have to factor that with the spread rate. So we want to reduce the spread, so we add additional inlets. When you add additional inlets, you reduce the velocity. So this goes back to my comment I made a long time ago, that for every one of these engineering decisions and plan requirements, there's implications. This is a very good example of that situation.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. So is it your position that it is not possible to design this development on this property and comply with the ordinances, comply with all of these sections?
It's, it's very difficult. I think they've designed it to the point where they can, and they've asked for the waivers where, where applicable.
I didn't ask you that. I asked you if it was your opinion that it is impossible to design this development on this property and comply with all the township ordinance sections.
I, I...
Objection, asked and answered.
Has not been answered.
It's the same question.
He did not answer the question.
He didn't like the answer.
Overruled. He hasn't asked it with respect to the entire plan.
I certainly would not use the term impossible.
Okay. And if it could be done, and you saw a plan that actually showed that it could be done for this... for this development, this road, on this property, would you then still believe that the waiver should be granted for this plan as it appears?
Objection.
That's a hypothetical.
Calls for speculation. There's no such plan in front of him. He's the township engineer.
Overruled. I think it's an appropriate question.
I would not comment on anything unless I had a plan in front of me, to be honest with you.
On, forgive me, I didn't get your section number. I apologize. But it's with the waiver requested on 345-311B, the requirement on backfilling of trenches. Maybe you can find that a lot faster than I can.
In the sake of keeping things moving, are you referring to LTL's comment number 55?
Yes, thank you. You agreed with LTL on that detail, is that correct?
Correct.
Has that detail been provided to you?
I do not believe so.
Finally, would you look at number 60 in LTL's report? Is it 58? Is there a 60?
I have a 60, yeah.
If you don't have it, I have it.
Oh, yeah, it's because the odd number of pages in the book there, Mark.
You have it?
I have a copy of it in front of me, yes.
Oh, I have it, I'm sorry. So you didn't comment on that at all, did you?
No, I have that as more of a legal question.
Really?
I'm sorry. Maybe not legal, what I have. Legal or traffic, I guess.
And that's the reason you didn't comment on?
I was not asked to comment on this.
I'm sorry, you were not asked to comment on it?
No, as I stated earlier, Ms. Camp directed me to respond to certain numbers of LTL's letter, which is what I did.
I'm sorry, I want to make sure I understand this correctly. You're saying you received instructions from Ms. Camp on what paragraphs in LTL's report you were to respond to?
The ones that were to be covered by my review, yes. We, I stated that earlier.
How did you receive that communication?
I don't recall if that was a conversation or via email or how, but I said that about an hour ago.
You did make that remark. I didn't realize what you meant. I have nothing further of this with us.
If you could go back to LTL's item number 42, this is with regard to stormwater and for concurrence with Mr. Prince, that the ordinance in the section that was referred to says if there's any alteration, you need somebody's permission.
Yes.
You with me on that?
I have it.
Isn't it true that the Township's Stormwater Management Ordinance requires that either the rate or the volume or both of runoff be reduced from pre-development to post-development?
Yes.
So in order to comply with that rate reduction provision, you have to alter or reduce the amount, the volume, or the rate, or possibly both, of the water that runs off of the Carlino property onto the BVA property.
Yes, and in this case, it'd be both.
I have no further questions.
It's my turn. Mr. Klein needs a break.
Yeah, I was saying, can I just use the restroom real quick? It'd be helpful. That's it.
Five-minute break.